To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Annette?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
John?
Sure.
Tracy Ellen?
Here.
Claudia?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
Doug? Alan?
Here.
Julian?
Here.
Brian? The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place sent to the record, the Star-Ledger newspapers, the borough clerks, borough libraries, as well as posting in their school district principal offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100.
Ready? To provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community in an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey student learning standards. Thank you. Okay.
So on October 14th, the board had interviews for the open board seat. We interviewed Alicia Armentel. She submitted a letter of interest. She was appointed at the October 14th meeting. And Alicia, please join me to be sworn in. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Alicia Armentel, do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state under the authority of me, so help me God.
And this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Alicia Armentel, do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education.
Or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by the law for the office of a member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
Nor disqualified due to convictions of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey S 18A 12-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ S 18A 12-1.
And that I will faithfully and partially and trustfully perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully and partially and trustfully perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Unless they want to stay.
Welcome. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comments on agenda items. Hearing none, no presentations, and student member report.
All right, so this is the middle school report. Congratulations to the HAWK Student Spotlight recipients for the month of October. Students are nominated by staff members for modeling great academic performance and/or high character. They are Benjamin Ball, Tristan Bay, Patrick Joyce, Shant Corazian, Cecilia De Augustino, Lexi Lambra, Bryn Nemec, and Charlotte Barabee. Congratulations to the seventh grader, Satvik Kumar, for winning this year's RDMS Spelling Bee. He will represent the district this spring in the Bergen County Spelling Bee. Shout out to our runner-up, Leah Choi, who competed admirably. Congratulations to the Riverdale Middle School Cross Country Teams and Girls Volleyball Team on another successful fall season. The boys' cross-country team earned a first-place finish this season in the Ridgefield Park Invitational. Middle school sports will continue in the winter with boys and girls basketball.
Now for the high school report, we've fulfilled month of November, starting off with the upcoming school musical, which is Beauty and the Beast next week. The hard work and dedication of our drama club department will be displayed through the fantastic production. Through the month of November, the fall sports here at Riverdale are starting to come to an end. Football has a big game this Friday away at Passaic Valley. We just won a great game against Passaic Valley in overtime. Let's keep it going. We are super proud of our student athletes who are amazing on and off the field with great attitudes and motivation to do good on the field and in the classrooms. The first marking period closed, and seniors finally got their early college applications in last week. Thank you to our guidance counselors for all their hard work and dedication. The first marking period finished strong, and we are looking forward to another three great marking periods. The college application deadlines and process comes with a lot of stress, so thank you to Ms. Kirkby and Mr. Pepe for hosting a Deadlines and Dogs Night on October 30th to help seniors relieve their stress. Lastly, in school, everything is going great. Inside and outside the classroom, Riverdale is always represented in a positive way to and by the students. Teachers and staff are great role models and make it easy and enjoyable to come to school and learn. Students love being greeted personally by Dr. Albro, Mr. Pepe, and Mr. Flanagan. It is great to see the students start to build and strengthen their bonds and relationship with the staff.
Thank you. Okay, president's report. Two weeks ago, I attended the New Jersey School Board Convention for a couple of days, and it happened to be a really good convention this year. First day, Robert and I attended Student Film Festival there, of which Riverdale was one of the prize winners. And it was really a great film that was entered. You want to share anything?
Yeah, two students were moseying around the community, and they took pictures outside Riverdale High School, and the effects of taking medication when you're not supposed to, and have a one student fell into this dream, and the other student became this giant and attacked him. It was great. I mean, personally, I thought Riverdale should have won first place, but I am cautious. It was a good festival, right, Mr. Fagenson?
Right. I mean, a lot of schools that entered and were given awards, I thought Riverdale's storyline was probably one of the best out of the whole group. And the filming was really great. I don't know how they did it, but they grew because of this medication, became giants, and stepped over the high school and everything. And cinematography was great and all. The second day, I attended some, oh, Trudy and I went to visit Musco Lighting, because I had remembered just before COVID that Tom Bonfiglio and I, who was the prior BA, we were talking to them, and they said, "Well, you have a warranty that we don't even give out anymore." So Trudy couldn't find it in the papers and everything. So we asked him if he could send us a copy, which he did, and we're fully guaranteed till the year 2031 on the lights around the stadium and field. So now we have printed copy, and God forbid anything happens, at least we'll, we still have a warranty on it. Do you have a copy of this? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Also, the second day, I attended a learning lab that happened to be given by our architect, Solutions Architecture, and it was about bidding smart and in these trying times, how to keep it within the referendum budget and all. Because, as he pointed out in the presentation, and I'll send everybody on the board a copy of this, the prices are just astronomical. I mean, a large edition in 2015 was about $350 a square foot. Now it's almost $600 a square foot. Of course, the materials have gone through the roof. And he was actually, as you read through this, it tells you when to go out to bid, when their contractors are very hungry for business, things you can do if you wanted to pay a little extra so they could get the job done after the kids leave in the evening, because a lot of times, it's idle time. So if you give them an incentive, you know, you can save some money. So I'll send you a copy of that that you can read. I attended a course called Board Members' Free Speech: Your Rights, given by David Rubin Esquire. And this course really shocked me, because I always thought we were bound by what we say, but under the Constitution and the Equal Rights Amendment, a lot of people have taken school boards to court. And now, basically, if you're speaking and you make it clear that you're speaking for yourself and not on behalf of anybody else on the board, you're pretty much free to say whatever you want, as long as you're not insulting or, you know, bringing anybody else on the board or in public into the conversation. And then, the last course I took was about creative and effective board members working with the superintendent team. It was a two-hour course. The first one, first hour, was all about mistakes people have made. They showed pictures and movies of what you shouldn't do. And then the second hour was about how to correct it. And I'm proud to say I was one of the only ones that left after the first hour, because we fulfill everything that's right about being a board member and working with the superintendent. So there was nothing to learn in the second hour. And that's my report for the evening.
Thank you. I'll take it from there. Good evening, everyone, and everyone at home. Just a reminder that marking period one is now complete. They finished the Wednesday prior to our short little break here, so we just started marking period two. I invite parents and students to reach out to guidance counselors, teachers, as you feel you need to, to get a good start for marking period two. Report cards should be coming out, do we call them that anymore? Progress reports should be coming out in the next couple of days, now that the teachers have an opportunity to put grades in. So that should be in the next couple of days. I wanted to just say, I don't think we've met since the Ford induction for the distinguished graduates. I don't think we've had a meeting since then, but I wanted to just say thank you to the Friends of Riverdale for putting on such a great program honoring our distinguished graduates. There were several of them last month. I was fortunate, well, I didn't think fortunate at first to be the emcee, because I don't know anybody, but I had a really good time meeting the people that are the distinguished graduates and all the people that they brought, and learned a lot about Riverdale history and actually filled in some blanks for me as to why things happen the way they happen around here, when you start putting the pieces together and meeting all the people that have been around for quite some time, and just really enjoyed hearing how well they spoke of their time in high school, and some of them, their time as well before my time, even in education. So some great graduates that certainly earned that distinction, and just a great program put on by Ford, and they do so much for our students, to raise money for our students and put on these great programs. I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Finally, just a reminder, I mentioned it in our last meeting, but we do have New Jersey School Boards working with us on strategic planning. We have some meetings coming in November 19th, December 9th, December 17th, right here in the library. Anybody who wants to come and give input for the board to consider is more than welcome to come. Again, it's facilitated by Matt Lee and New Jersey School Boards Association. I've had a number of parents reach out already, so I hope we'll have a nice, robust turnout for that night. That's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have to say, you did a great job as the emcee.
Thank you. I had fun.
You can tell you did. Okay, at this time, I'd like to move on all items. Oh, excuse me. Let me go through the committee reports first. Budget and finance, we haven't had a meeting yet.
I've not had a meeting since the last meeting.
Facilities and security?
Nothing.
Community relations and technology?
To report.
Curriculum.
Actually, we met this evening. We discussed curriculum updates that are always ongoing and potential additions and evolutions to our curriculum as our referendum is evolving with new facilities and some exciting things to look forward to.
Thanks. Okay, at this time, I'd like to move on all items designated with an asterisk. To be part of the consent agenda and approved, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Alicia? John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
I'm going to stay in.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, 14H. The superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments listed in the financial report for the month ending October 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, John.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Alicia? John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Stay in.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Okay, 14O. Like to move certain items from the executive agenda tonight. Like to move resignations and retirements. B2 and 3, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board accept with regret the resignation of, all right, help me out, Trudy.
Taximon.
Okay, thank you. And B3, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board rescind the appointment of the following coaches for the 2024-2025 school year. There are two people on that. And E1, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of the following coaches for the 2025 season. And E2, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of the following volunteer assistant coaches. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Claudia. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Alicia?
I'm staying.
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Okay. Old business.
You're looking at me. I'm like, you're feeling like.
Oh, you're.
I know. I usually have stuff. I do. I usually have stuff. Oh, my God. No, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good. Yeah.
You're running out of time.
I can save it all for the next meeting.
Any other, any new business?
Just the one item for a budget calendar.
I'd like to just review the budget calendar, just the board.
So in November and December, we're talking for the budget for the '25-'26 calendar year. In November and December, I'll start sitting down with the administrators. Dr. Albro does it with me, and we go over different needs of the staff, courses, different repairs, just starting the whole budget process. Then in January and February, we start reviewing the budget with the finance committee. At the end of February, we receive our state eight numbers to then finalize the budget. And then March, the proposed budget will be put on the agenda. In April, once it, let me back up, and then after it's on the agenda, then goes to the county office for approval. Then it's put in April, the budget is then put on for the public to hear, and then the board puts it on the agenda. I wanted to review that with everybody.
Okay, at this time, like to open it up to public comments. Please state your name and your address and.
Step up to the microphone. Right to there.
Eric Modell. The address is 178 Bogard Road in River Edge, and I'm here. Three hats. First of all, I'm a member of the River Edge Historic Commission, part of the Bergen County Historical Society, and thirdly, I do postings locally of sense of place and communities under the title of Journeys into River Edge. I've been talking informally with some people over past months and years about the idea of local history or the stories that I post on Facebook and other places, but doing it rather than an individual, they're supposed to be stories among people from the community, different stakeholders and seniors, children, and the like. And with that in mind, I've been talking, as I said, informally to folks at the school about weaving in the schools, number one, in terms of a local history component, a curriculum, number two, projects, community projects that gather stories together. You combine those individual stories, they become part of what I call a smart community narrative that provides a sense of being, a sense of place, and who we are, whether in River Edge or Oradell, that compares us to folks in Vermont or California, or even contrasts us in our history to New Moford, Hackensack, and Paramus. So that's one. We've been working on that in terms of the, I've been doing it individually, but also my role in the River Edge Historic Committee. So I wanted to introduce you to the idea and myself, and maybe you can point me to the right people to talk to, and would like to formalize that and weave in Riverdale. I'm willing to talk to our counterparts in Oradell as well, given the joint history, first of the school, but also the interaction between River Edge and Oradell. So that's number one. Number two is that as part of my role at the Bergen County Historical Society, we've been hearing a lot about the year 2026, which is going to be the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence and the founding of the United States, and there are big plans in the works right now. I'm here to introduce you to that taking place. Last month, at the Campbell Christie House, there was a program that was sponsored by, it's called REV New Jersey, which is the statewide entity. It was put together by Bergen 250, which is on the county level. It was put together by Bergen 250, which is on the county level. And also, there's something called America250.org. Be happy to share that with anybody. But the idea that there are activities being planned, but a whole range of things that could be worked with communities from 5K races that have a historic component that could be tacked on, green programs that take place. This doesn't necessarily relate to school, but I'm trying to mention that this 250 is on a community-wide basis. So among the resources, and there are loads of them, are there are curriculums that are being set up on the state level or recommendations that I think might be a resource to you and to the public schools, divided into two groups, K through 5th grade and then sixth through grade 12. So again, I'd be happy to talk to whoever, but I'd like to, you know, introduce the idea of working in a collaborative fashion between the Historic Commission and River Edge and work with the schools and other stakeholders within the community. It could be a community-wide celebration and taking advantage of what the 250th anniversary might bring in a couple of years, so. And finally, in my individual role in terms of the Journeys into, I've done this for like 30 years, national basis, regional, local, about these stories. I was a fan of the late Charles Corralt of things off the beaten path. And that includes history, but it's broader. It's about our lore, our traditions, things that resonate with us, why something is special. And again, what makes River Edge or what makes Oradell special, the secret sauce that's in our DNA. And there are stories to be told, and it's part of who we are as a community. And hoping to work with maybe media people. The fact is that these stories can be told in a number of different ways. On the Historic Commission, we have an intern that's been participating for the last five, six years, and they've contributed in a number of ways. Also a member of the Lions Club locally. And they have a group called the Leos, which are a group of volunteers here at the high school who've helped the Lions Club in so many different ways. And I'm hoping maybe that we can have, in that regard, whether it's the media department or people from the history club, but to solidify those relationships because there's a lot that the students can help with. And at the same time, I think there's a lot that students can learn, education that goes beyond the classroom. So again, hope I didn't overwhelm you with too much, but it's an introduction saying I'm happy to collaborate if you find it useful, and thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Stay there. Stay there. Because a couple of things. I love everything that you just said. I love. So we should talk at some point, maybe just make an appointment to meet with me because I already have some ideas. I'm the president of the Bergen County Superintendents right now, only for six, seven more months. Mr. Fletcher, who I replaced here, is the county superintendent right now, hopefully for a long time. And I think between the two of us, we can get a lot of information out to the entire county about the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. I've seen nothing come my way yet, by the way, from the state, from the DOE. I don't know if you saw anything, but I haven't seen anything yet. But I would like to bring that forward. Do you know, is there a counterpart to your position in Oradell as well?
I just, I didn't want to put the cart before the horse. I just did a...
Because I'm going to recruit them too.
An email there to say that I, you know, sent an email earlier. There's a group there, and I'm hoping to hear back from them. But I wanted, as a citizen, introduce myself to you first before I did anything more formally.
That's great. I appreciate that you did. But we should talk, and I think there's a lot that we can do working together. And I'm looking at some of these people here with the cameras and saying, there's a lot that we can do in the next two years. So I'd be happy to have that conversation.
I'll give you an example. We have, I've spoken to the folks, the public schools, but it sort of stalled out for a number of reasons. But I don't know if you're familiar, Mary Donahue. She's turning 100 in River Edge. She was a freeholder, councilwoman, and so many projects. She did a book years ago about New Bridge Landing. And we recently recorded her reading the book, and we're hoping to have that. We're also, at her suggestion, we should do a history of the street names in River Edge. So thanks to the counterparts, the media people on our committee and beyond, we're creating that into a QR code. So if somebody's walking in town and they scan it, they'll get a history of the risky place or Bogart Road. And there are a couple of other projects. One of my favorites is the idea that if kids in first, second, third grade or in the high school go home, and there are intergenerational stories to be told, whether within the house or within the neighborhood. And, you know, again, those stories come in, and they're in this town square of stories, and they become part of our community narrative. I've worked with businesses also to tell their stories. And from Pritchley's Candy, which is in the old church. They've been a candy store since 1956. Doing something, if you look in the Facebook, I'll be doing it about the Chinese takeout place near the River Edge Diner that's been a takeout place for 70 years under a couple of names and how it's been such an integral part of the community. So there are so many stories. The business people are willing to participate, the history of the River Edge Diner, but saying that we're all part of the community together and acknowledging that because when kids go off to college, they're suburban kids. There's difference between one suburban community and, you know, from the point of view of too many kids, suburbia might mean Long Island, Westchester, New Jersey. There are differences, and they should be. The very least, even if they're rejecting where they came from, they should know where they came from.
Thank you.
All right.
That's great.
How shall I leave information?
I'm going to be quiet.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Thank you, Dr. Albro and all the board members. Hello again. I represent my friends here and the American Indian community in River Edge and Oradell towns. We would like to request Diwali, the Festival of Lights, the major holiday celebrated across the South Asian community to be given as a holiday in the Riverdale School District calendar and no homework weekend in the year 2025-26. Coming year, Diwali will fall on Monday, October 20th, 2025. It would be a welcome change for families whose kids were marked absent from school to celebrate this year and those whose kids missed some of the celebration to be in the school, either submitting their tests, quizzes, or finishing their homework. It is so important to preserve the culture and just to keep that connection with the roots. That's the reason we are once again here requesting Diwali as a holiday. Our kids and we are citizens here, and America is our home. But we want our kids to feel a sense of pride from where their origins are, from where their ancestors come from. Having Diwali as a school holiday would mean that we are truly accepted and equal part of these communities. Having a no homework weekend would help our kids celebrate the holiday, enjoy the rituals, and be with their families in their prayers instead of worrying about homework. It's a five-day festival. We are only requesting one day off to honor as a school holiday. Yes, we know it's an excused absence, but it's not a day off for others. Everyone else shall be still going to school, even if our kids took this absence, which they have, and later shall have to make up their missed work. And in the sophomore and the junior and the senior year this year where my kids are, they don't want to miss school even for one class period. Diwali is one holiday that Indians of cross faiths celebrate. It's about time that Riverdale School District recognizes it. Most of the towns in Bergen County have done, have placed this as a school holiday in their calendar. We have a petition signed by almost 250-plus residents from River Edge and Oradell requesting this as a holiday and no homework weekend. My friends Achille, Chavla, and Jyotsna Sharma here joined me in representing Riverdale Indian Association. Diwali was not only recognized by River Edge Mayor, but also by the County Executive's Office, the Senate, the Assembly, past few years giving us proclamations, citations, recognizing our achievements and our work to preserve the Indian culture and heritage in Bergen County. Diwali has been announced as a holiday, like we mentioned, in most of the towns. So the cheat sheet is almost here. All you have to do is just make a call, find out how they did it, and we will have this as in our school district too. Despite being known for embracing diversity, we are still waiting our school to do it. We would appreciate if this is in place for the school year 2025-26. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Everybody, amen. Thank you.